Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please bow your heads. Lord and Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together, do the work of the county, give us wisdom and guidance this evening. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the County Council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reba Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council briefly on any subject not appearing on the agenda? Let me ask you to please come forward. Keep your remarks to two minutes. State your name and address for the record. Good evening, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Fink, members of the board, the council. I don't know how much you've paid attention to the hazards of your cellphones, but I have received several postcards, "Save the girls" and "Save the boys." If you read the safety information in your cellphone, you will discover that the radiation is hazardous, and, you know, it's not just the issues of cancer and stuff. But the one that seemed to catch the college-age guys' attention was the one of the damaged sperm and the reduced sperm count didn't bother them. It was the erectile dysfunction. So I think you might want to look at theenvironmenthealthtrust.org. They have lots of interesting things. The woman who heads it is really an outstanding scientist who could have retired 10 years ago, but she's really passionate about protecting infants and children because the standard for developing safety with cellphones was back in the 80s with military guys. And I wouldn't want to say my son, who is a Marine, is a bonehead, but these guys, you know, 200 pounds, you know, and, you know, they got an 11-pound head with a lot of bone. Infants, toddlers, fetuses, you know, there isn't that kind of protection. Therefore, you know, you really do want to learn how hazard this stuff is, keep the phones away from you, protect your family and your loved ones, not to mention yourself. So on that bright and happy note, then, we turn to the issues of my case with the Board of Appeals, which isn't the matter here, but just it's an appalling thing. I've been telling you about this neighbor who bought this little house. It's a substandard house. It's 1,000 square feet. It sits on a substandard lot of less than 8,000 square feet in an R2 zone. And you guys write the laws so you know that in R2, that's single family, and you need 20,000 square feet. But we wouldn't want to worry about that. We go in, we gut the house, we rip out the wall that separates the living from the porch, you know, the living room from the bedroom, the living room from the dining room, because now we want to have a modern floor plan. Then we have the machine come in, go through the basement, dig out the basement, make it deeper.
Please some more, Ms.?
And so when you get, you know, with that, just that's the beginning part, and it goes on, but you're creating a two-family dwelling and a single-family thing.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Well, we've got to have...
Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grassman.
Might be short and sweet. I've got a tremendous amount of phone calls about the deployment of the fountains in my district on Marley Creek and Furnace Creek. And for the folks that are watching, have no fear, John Grasso is here. I have the boat on the lift. I've got some motors that just came in today, and so you will see me out there Saturday and Sunday putting fountains out, so I got your back. Don't worry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Grass. So I do want to mention that Mr. Peruka is unable to join us tonight. He is recovering from surgery that he had late last week, and we certainly hope to see him shortly. May I have a motion to any partial reading of any bill resolution or minutes constitute the reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And a second.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of June 6, 10, and 15, 20, 16.
The meetings were called order by the Chairman, followed by the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 6, 10, and 15? Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of June 6, 10, and 15 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills that will be introduced this evening.
Bill 5316, An Ordnance Concerning Watershed Protection and Restoration Program, Stormwater Remediation Fee Waiver of Interest. Bill 5416, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Voting on Weems Creek. Bill 5516, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Plan Unit Developments in Commercial Districts in the BWI Fort Meade Growth Area.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolutions that will be introduced this evening.
Resolution 3616, Resolution Continuing the Service of Joanna D. Dickinson as Acting County Auditor. Resolution 3716, Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anorondal County Ethics Commission. Resolution 3816, Resolution Approving Estimates of the Annual Cost of Providing Health Insurance Benefits and the Employer Subsidies Used to Determine the Rates for Certain Participants Under the County Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program. Resolution 3916, Resolution Confirming Appointments to the Board of Trustees for the Anorondal County Retiree Health Benefits Trust. Resolution 4016, Resolution Approving Anorondal County's 2016 Financial Insurance Plan for Compliance with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Phase One Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution Number 36 and 37, 16, Bill Numbers 28, 42, 46 through 49, 16, and Resolution Numbers 33, 16, and 35, 16, out of order?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolutions 36 and 37, 16, and Bill Numbers 28, 16, 42, 16, 46, 16 through 49, 16, and Resolution Numbers 33 and 35, 16, out of order, passes.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 36, 16.
Resolution Continuing the Service of Joanna D. Dickinson as Acting County Auditor.
Thank you. This is my resolution, just simply as Chairman. I think we've all kind of spoken and decided that we'd like to keep Ms. Dickinson on for at least another minimum 90 days, assuming that she'll continue to serve. We'd like to have you in putting this resolution up for that. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
All day long.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 36, 16 has passed.
Please read the title of 37, 16.
Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anorondal County Ethics Commission.
Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the County Executive's Office. This resolution is to name Catherine Kaywood to the Ethics Commission, who was the council's choice for the Ethics Commission.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on Resolution 37, 16? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 37, 16.
Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anorondal County Ethics Commission.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 37, 16 has passed.
Please read the title of 42, 16.
An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Public Works Utilities Capital Facility Recoupment Charge.
All right. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. With me at the table is Controler Julie Musog. Bill 46, 16 is our annual bond ordinance concerning the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes. We will be offering amendments at the appropriate time. This is one of a few bills tonight that we had to introduce early and later the budget timeline to try to get these bills to be effective as soon as possible, so we will be offering the amendments that, like I said, at the appropriate time.
All right. Any discussion for the administration? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on Bill 46, 16? No movement. The bill hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 46, 16.
An Ordnance Concerning the Issue and Sale and Delivery of Anorondal County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
May I have a motion to vote on Amendments 1 through 7 as a block?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to vote on Amendments 1 through 7 as a block is passed.
All right. Madam Sec... Mr. Marzick?
Shouldn't I read them first?
You read the amendments first.
Yeah, go ahead.
Amendment 1: This amendment reduces the amount of bond anticipation notes that may be outstanding at any time. Amendment 2: This amendment reduces the amount of bond authority. Amendment 3: This amendment corrects an amount in this bill to conform to the final capital budget. Amendment 4: This amendment corrects certain amounts in this bill to conform to the final capital budget. Amendment 5: This amendment corrects an amount in this bill to conform to the final capital budget. Amendment 6: This amendment eliminates brackets, corrects certain capital project numbers in spelling, and eliminates certain capital projects from this section. Amendment 7: This amendment corrects an exhibit to reflect dollar amounts included in the final capital budget.
May I have a motion to adopt?
Some move.
Second.
All right. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, as I mentioned, we introduced this bill before the budget was struck, so the amendments before you, 1 through 7, are reflecting the changes made by the council on the budget. And Ms. Musog wants to add any more info to that. I think we've been working with the Auditor's Office on this, so the numbers should all be lined up.
All right. Just for public record by a monitor, your support, 1 through 7?
We have not reviewed these in detail at all yet. We decided, because of the timing with the budget work that we were doing the last couple weeks, that we would wait and do our comments on the amended bill per these once these get enacted. So I have not done any detailed review of the amendments.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Trumpbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Ms. Musog, let's game plan this out a little bit. If the Auditor's Office, if we pass these amendments, the amended bill comes back before us. We're not going to vote it tonight, correct?
Correct.
If there's another mistake, I mean, do we have time? Is it okay to fix it?
Yes. So at the July 5 meeting, we could amend it again and pass it before the end of July.
Okay. Okay. And that's partly why we put the emergency status on it.
This is not an emergency.
No, this isn't.
This one is not?
No.
The last one was.
The last one was, correct.
Okay. We don't need it to be emergency?
No.
Okay.
We cannot make it an emergency.
Oh, because it's a budget bill. Right. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Very good. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendments 1 through 7.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendments 1 through 7 are passed.
As was mentioned earlier, this bill will now be heard on July 5. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 47, 16.
An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Classified Service Exempt Service.
All right. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the County Executive's Office. With me at the table is Andy Rhodes from Office of Personnel. This bill is the annual pay bill that implements the collective bargaining agreements for the 12 county bargaining units and budgets the increases for the nonrepresented employees for fiscal year 2017. Again, we will be offering amendments at the appropriate time. Ms. Rhodes or I can answer questions that the council may have about the specifics, or I can run through them, but in looking at the Auditor's Blue Note, I think it pretty clearly summarizes all the changes that are being proposed.
Very good. Thank you.
Ms. Trumpbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Musog, is the reason we're doing it this way because these agreements or the negotiations were not concluded by the time the budget was introduced?
Correct.
Okay.
Not by the time the budget was introduced, by the time the budget was passed.
Okay.
So this bill was introduced before the budget was finalized and the...
I understand. Okay.
And all the arbitrations weren't complete by then.
Okay. So this is, I mean, in essence, it's a version of a cleanup bill?
Well, it's required to do the pay for pay scales for all employees.
Right.
But when the bill was introduced, all of the arbitrations weren't yet complete.
Okay. But so for, you know, in the Auditor's Blue Letter, there is a table with six different employee classes and then explanation. So all of these were agreed upon by the administration and the bargaining units?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we are just, we're just being asked to sign off on the agreements?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it goes through, on the previous page, it goes through all the changes?
No, right. Right. I saw that. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what we're voting on.
Any question? Any other questions from the council? Seeing none. Sure. Mr. Walker?
Ms. Rhodes, I did have one question. The payouts to folks that are at the maximum within their pay grade?
Yes, sir.
Is, why wouldn't we pay those dollars in the upcoming budget since it looks like the result of these is that you're, or the justification is that we're giving a percentage of pay increase to employees in this next year that these employees won't see because they're at the maximum of their salary range? So, but we're absorbing the costs in this year. Is that normal? Or would we, wouldn't it be, I mean, more appropriate to recognize the expense in the year that it's actually incurred?
Well, they will receive that money this year. So on their anniversary date between July 1 and June 30 of 2017, if they're maxed out, they then will get the lump sum in lieu of anything being applied to their base salary. So it is for their performance evaluation for July 17.
But it'll be in this, next year, the money will be...
Yes.
Calculated.
It's in the budget this year.
Fiscal year 17.
But what?
Budget.
Oh, okay. So why is it necessary in the fourth quarter transfer, then?
This is not the fourth quarter transfer.
Oh, my apologies.
This is the pay bill.
Got it. Okay. I had the two confused.
This just sets the scales for all the years so that...
Got it.
As a result of each negotiation.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Fink?
I'll point out to the section in the Blue Letter, underneath that table, there's four bullet points of items that were not, that were unknown at the time the budget was presented, and so therefore, we've outlined the additional fiscal impact of things that were not known when we passed the budget.
All right. Any other questions? Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on Bill 47, 16? Seeing no movement in the audience, we will close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 47, 16.
An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Classified Service Exempt Service.
Please read Amendment Number 1.
This amendment modifies pay schedules and provisions for increases in pay for certain classified employees as a result of collective bargaining and binding arbitration and removes a provision from existing code regarding pay allowances for detention lieutenants and captains.
Motion to adopt?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. All right. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to defer to Ms. Rhodes on the amendments.
Pay.
Amendment Number 1 is for detention sergeants, and what that does is it increase the min and the maximo of that pay scale by $1,300, which is the allowances that they were receiving as not part of their base pay. So they've rolled those allowances into their salary.
All right. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 2 has passed.
All right. Any other questions? Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on Bill 47, 16? Seeing no movement in the audience, we will close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 47, 16.
An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Classified Service Exempt Service.
Please read Amendment Number 1.
This amendment modifies pay schedules and provisions for increases in pay for certain classified employees as a result of collective bargaining and binding arbitration and removes a provision from existing code regarding pay allowances for detention lieutenants and captains.
Motion to adopt?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. All right. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to defer to Ms. Rhodes on the amendments.
Very good. Ms. Rhodes?
Pay. Amendment Number 1 is for detention sergeants, and what that does is it increase the min and the maximo of that pay scale by $1,300, which is the allowances that they were receiving as not part of their base pay. So they've rolled those allowances into their salary.
All right. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 2 has passed.
All right. We will hear this bill on July 5 as well. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 48, 16.
An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Fourth Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriations.
All right. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the County Executive's Office. Coming to the table is Stephen Thoreau from the Budget Office. This is the fourth quarter transfer bill. Again, we will be offering amendments. This bill was introduced back in May 16, when we had our best guess for what the fourth quarter transfer would be. We have amendments now based on discussions with the auditor, as well as updates that we've received to amend this bill based on changes that have occurred since the introduction on May 16.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on 48, 16? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 48, 16.
An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Fourth Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriations.
Please read Amendment Number 1.
This amendment reduces the general fund balance, accounts for additional Circuit Court Special Fund revenue, removes the Department of Social Service requests for additional appropriation, increases the appropriation requested for the Office of Law, increases the appropriation requested for the Office of the State's Attorney, increases the appropriation requested for the Department of Recreation and Parks, and adds an appropriation for the Department of Inspections and Permits.
Anything to add to that, Mr. Marzick?
I don't.
You need a motion to...
Motion to adopt?
Some move.
Second. Anything to add to that?
I don't. Mr. Chairman, Stephen, Mr. Thoreau is going to answer any questions that the council may have on these if we can walk through them one by one, however you would prefer.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
I don't, I don't personally need to hear about all of them, but I would like some more detail on the State's Attorney increase since that's still fresh in my memory for the third quarter transfer. If you wouldn't mind, walk into that one.
Sure. Chairman, members of the council, Stephen Thoreau from the Budget Office. The State's Attorney's Office was increased by $85,000 as there was grant transfers that were to go against the general fund that were not anticipated when we proposed the initial bill.
So, but this is, so this is an additional $85,000 on top of the administration's request for additional appropriations to pay for, and I'm going to quote the Blue Letter, "overspending for personnel, personal services, contractual services, and business and travel."
That's correct. This brings the State's Attorney's Office up to $450,000 of additional appropriation in the fourth quarter transfer.
And when you say additional, that's in addition to the addition that we did in the third quarter transfer. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So I'm, I'm just going to put this out here, colleagues. I'm going to vote against this amendment because at the time that the State's Attorney came before us a few months back for similar overspending, I told them that I would prefer that they live within their means. That certainly seems to be a mantra politically these days, and yet, we hear from the State's Attorney's Office, not only did they need that request before for overspending, but now they've come back to us for more additional overspending. And quite frankly, I just can't support that. So I may very well be the only one that votes against this amendment, but if it, if the amendment were to fail, I would, I would be happy to support all the rest of it that's in here. I just, I can't support any more additional money for overspending of the State's Attorney's Office. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
The state's attorney's office was increased by $85,000, as there was grant transfers that were to go against the general fund that were not anticipated when we proposed the initial bill.
So this is an additional $85,000 on top of the administration's request for additional appropriations to pay for, and I'm going to quote the blue letter, "overspending for personal services, contractual services, and business and travel."
That's correct. This brings the state's attorney's office up to $450,000 of additional appropriation in the fourth quarter transfer.
And when you say additional, that's in addition to the addition that we did in the third quarter transfer. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So I'm just going to put this out here, colleagues. I'm going to vote against this amendment, because at the time that the state's attorney came before us, a few months back, for similar overspending, I told them that I would prefer that they live within their means. That certainly seems to be a mantra politically these days, and yet, we hear from the state's attorney's office, not only did they need that request before for overspending, but now they've come back to us for more additional overspending. And quite frankly, I just can't support that. So I may very well be the only one that votes against this amendment, but if the amendment were to fail, I would be happy to support all the rest of it that's in here. I just, I can't support any more additional money for overspending of the state's attorney's office. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
No.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number One is passed.
Please read Amendment Number Two.
This amendment increases the grants special revenue fund for the recognition of grants for the Health Department and the Office of Planning and Zoning.
Motion to adopt?
Sound move.
And a second. And then there's a second. Mr. Marzick, anything else?
Nothing, unless the council has questions.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two is passed.
All right. This is an emergency bill, so we will go ahead and vote on this this evening. Is there any other conversation? Please call a roll on the bill.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
No.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill 4816, as amended, is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of 4916.
An emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education supplementary appropriations, and transfers of funds.
All right. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the county executive's office. With me at the table is Alex Sheknovich and Mastianski from the Inorond County Public Schools. This is the annual fourth quarter bill for the Board of Education to balance its budget. This bill recognizes additional revenue received by the Board of Ed since the initial adoption of the budget, and this also has transfers between the categories to close out the fiscal year. Mr. Sheknovich or Mr. Stansky would be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Mr. Pruski?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to fully disclose, for the Ethics Commission, that my spouse is a employee of the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and open up this public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on Bill 4916? Seeing no movement, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 4916.
An emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education supplementary appropriation and transfers of funds.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 4916 is passed.
Thank you. Please read the title of 33, Resolution 3316.
Resolution urging the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis in Inorond County to name the Crofton Library after the late Councilman John J. Clacco III.
Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you'll recall, when we entertained the bill that was in front of us, to allow the Library Foundation to begin naming libraries, I mentioned during that meeting, and we heard testimony from Ms. Clacco, who attended the hearing that evening, that they had tried, at one point, the council had previously attempted to encourage the Library Foundation and the Library Trustees to name the Crofton Library after Mr. Clacco, since it was one of the things that he had pushed for tremendously during his term. And he tragically died, as you're aware, towards the end of his second term. And it was at that point that the council passed a unanimous resolution to support the naming of the library after him. I had some conversation after the introduction of the resolution with folks at the library, as I just wanted to read a brief email to the council from the library, from the, I think it's Mr. Ald who wrote it, yes, Mr. Ald. It says, "Hello, a small group of us met this morning to discuss the resolution you'll be introducing this evening, to urge the Board of Trustees to honor Mr. Clacco by naming the Crofton Library for him. This meeting included the filing individuals, Hall Worthington, Chairman of the Board of Trustees, Don Rowland, nominated to become chairman, former Councilman Bert Rice, who served alongside Mr. Clacco, Foundation Directors Lisa Hillman, Don Rowland, Hamilton Chaney, staff Anne Glenn, Julie Kaiserball, Christine Feldman, Skip Ald, former Foundation Consultant Bess Langbein. We agree that the resolution should move forward. Once our Board of Trustees receives the resolution, the Foundation Board of Directors will give it full consideration in the context of the larger goals of the campaign and the sincere wish to honor Mr. Clacco. They will make a recommendation of the Board of Trustees. Neither board meets over the summer. Therefore, voting on naming the Crofton Library in honor of Mr. Clacco will take place after the September meetings of the two boards. To clarify our process, the Foundation Board of Directors must first make a recommendation of the Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees makes the decision. We are pleased to have this opportunity, considering honoring the important work of Mr. Clacco. Thank you for bringing this important matter before the County Council, Skip Ald." So I just wanted to share that with the council. That's all the comments I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Ms. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I joined Mr. Walker on this resolution as a cosponsor, and I just wanted to make the point and put it on the record. I don't generally think that the council should be prescriptive or paternalistic to the library system in their naming program, but quite frankly, you know, I was moved by the testimony of Mrs. Clacco and other members of the community, and I felt that this was a very special circumstance and a fitting circumstance to kind of kick off the library systems naming program. So I'm pleased to support this, but I just want to be clear, I certainly don't intend, and I would hope that the council doesn't intend, to frequently weigh in on that library's naming program. So, thank you.
So the library that they support, Mr. Ald supports the name?
They said they haven't voted on it, but they'll take that vote later in the...
But Mr. Ald supports it, it sounds like.
I don't want to put words in his mouth, but that, he heard the email, that's kind of what, it sounded like he didn't have an objection to at least us passing the resolution and 40 to them for consideration, is what it sounded like.
Yeah. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the county executive's office. I think the county executive shares the same concerns Mr. Trumbauer raised with this, but also an additional concern. I mean, we've, you know, for the last two years that I've been before you, obviously, Mr. Trumbauer worked very hard on the Annapolis Library.
I don't want it named after me.
I understand.
I just want to be clear.
I understand. You know, Mr. Grasso, obviously, has been working with us on the Glenn Burney Library, Mr. Fink on the...
I'll take the name recognition.
I know you would.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Fink on the Rivera Beach Library. I think it, you know, you raise a concern of precedent being set for those in the council who, you know, support projects or support, in this case, libraries, whether there's the pressure to, from the council, to pressure the library board as well to name libraries in the future. But I think the bigger concern for us is that it kind of defeats the purpose of this fundraising initiative, which is to raise money for the library and for the different libraries throughout the county. Obviously, the library board has set out the goals that they want to use these funds for improving technology and improving space in these libraries, and it's, you know, it puts me in an awkward spot of, you know, challenging this resolution, I guess, but the goal is to raise funds for this, and, you know, if, let's say, I think the example was Northrop Grumman that was used before in the discussion of the original bill, if Northrop Grumman wanted to donate money to the board and name the library after Mr. Clacco, and I think that would achieve the same purpose, but I think, you know, we'll see what the board moves forward in the fall, but we would ask you to oppose this resolution for those two concerns.
Mr. Chair. Ms. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Marzick. I mean, I totally appreciate the concerns, and I understand them. I'm going to ignore them, but I understand why you're making them, and I just want to stress to my colleagues that this is essentially a non-binding resolution. It doesn't compel the board to do it. I think it's more about expressing a sentiment and, you know, in honor of Mr. Clacco, so I'm going to support this, and I hope that we can pass it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruski?
Thank you, Mr. Marzick and Mr. Walker. I do want to add my name as a sponsor on this resolution. I did take the time to reach out to several community leaders in Crofton. I only represent four or five precincts, but certainly, we use the library, and people were very supportive, especially the circumstances around Mr. Clacco's death and certainly his support. So I certainly recognize, Mr. Marzick, what you're saying, but I am going to support my colleague's resolution because of what the community and certainly others thought, and especially the circumstances. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
All right. Any other conversation? Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title.
Resolution urging the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis in Inorond County to name the Crofton Library after the late Councilman John Clacco.
Any other discussion? I do just want to briefly say, well, I certainly don't mind the library naming it after the councilman. I'm going to vote no, just on the policy, that I don't think this county or this council should weigh in on these names. Well, I certainly don't doubt that Mr. Clacco is the reason that that library was built, and, you know, he may very well deserve his name on that building. I don't know that the council should be weighing in on what the name of that library is, or the Glenn Burney Library, or the Rivera Beach Library. So I'm going to vote no for that reason, but certainly wouldn't mind seeing the library board decide to make that name in his honor. With that, Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
I'm going to tag along with the chairman, exactly what he says. Man might very well deserve the thing, but, you know, like I said, that's up to them. We can turn around and say yes, and they're going to do what they want to do anyway, so I'm going to say no.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, two in the negative. Resolution 3316 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of 34, 3516.
Resolution repealing Resolution 1316, proposing an amendment to the Charter of Inorond County to require that county records be open for inspection and copying in compliance with the Maryland Public Information Act and other applicable law.
Mr. Mar, or Mr. Walker, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I introduced this resolution after it was pointed out and brought to our attention, both through emails we've received at the council, opinions that we received from Mr. Plymire, reports in the media, and I don't have a way to reconsider my vote on the resolution that we passed, putting this charter change forward, but I did feel that I would like to reverse what we did in passing that resolution, and so I've introduced this one. I understand that the Office of Law has an opinion that this resolution, I guess, is violative of election law, and at the end of the meeting, after the hearing's over tonight, I am going to ask that we hold this final vote on this resolution until Mr. Peruca returns to the council for the next meeting. But I just felt like that the resolution that we passed previously, that I didn't have a clear understanding with all the information in front of me, and I do now, and so I would like the council to consider reversing what we passed at that time, and that's why I put this resolution forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
We would be opposed to this resolution for, I guess, several reasons, but one is that, I guess, we have more questions about this, and I had reached out to the Office of Law when this bill was introduced, and Ms. Duden is obviously here with me at the table, and she can kind of speak to this, but it's my understanding that this resolution has no effect, because the Resolution 1316, which was passed by the council, will appear on the ballot, and that unless, I'm not sure if Ms. Tate or someone else can advise, I don't believe that this resolution will do what it purports to do, which is to repeal Resolution 1316. I don't believe you can do that legally. I know you could pass a competing resolution, if you wished, but I don't think you can pass a resolution to repeal a resolution that's a charter resolution, so we would ask you to oppose this.
I don't know whether there's, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Tate?
I don't know whether there's legal authority to say that either. I think the council's repealed other resolutions that they've passed here in the chamber. I don't think there's any distinction with the charter resolution. I think the opinion that was provided has more to do with a restatement of what the state law says, but essentially, what the state law interpretation is, it's tying the council's hands from never being able to change their mind. And I don't know whether the state law supports the situation that ties the hands of a legislative body to never change their mind, when the question is not on the ballot yet. And, you know, I know that they've suggested another competing question could be added, and then they can have, see, the questions both go forward on the ballot, and if they both pass, if they contradict each other, then the law stays the same. But I believe it's a stretch to say that a legislative body that takes an action that is to condition precedent for a ballot measure to be placed on the ballot, and changes their mind, and passes a resolution that repeals a resolution previously passed in the same manner as other resolutions are repealed as previously passed. I question that interpretation. So I suggest that we have some more information from the state on what it really means to say this, because I think what you're saying is, basically, the council wants, they're stuck, and they can never change their mind if it's, if it's, we haven't reached the third Monday in August where questions are certified. So basically, I mean, I have concerns about that, because I don't see it in the state code. I would like to see some case law that supports it. I don't, I have, sitting up here as the legislative council, I obviously don't support something that says that this body no longer has any say. So that's where we are.
Mr. Chair? Ms. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Who gets to decide whether we can do this or not? And what I mean, what I mean by that is, let's just presume for a second, and I don't know where the votes are on this, let's presume that we were to pass at some date this resolution, and, you know, you guys say, "We can't do that." Ms. Tate has advised she thinks we can. Is it the AG? Is it the Board of Elections? I mean, who gets to make that decision?
The Board of Elections is only going to take the question from the county attorney. I've talked to the attorney for the Board of Elections today, and their, his thought was, without speaking with the board, was, you know, "We take the question as it's certified by the county attorney." I think the question is, to the AG, is, "Can the county attorney certify a question where the governing body has said, 'We don't support this resolution anymore, and we don't,'" I mean, if that's where the votes shake out, I don't see how that's where the AG comes in. What is the state law?
And that certification, you're saying that happens the third week of August?
It has to be done by the...
So it has not happened yet.
It has to be done by the third Monday in August. No, there's no ballot right now.
But what I mean is, so we passed a previous resolution, that has not yet been certified. Is that correct?
It is qualified, and it will be certified by me.
But it has not, to date, been certified?
No, but it is required under Article 11A of the state constitution to be certified.
But, Mr. Chair, if I might, so, I mean, Ms. Duden, if we were to take a legislative action that said, essentially, "We don't want you to certify that," at that point, you would still certify it over the objection of the latest?
Yes, because you have no legal process through which you could take that action any longer. The resolution was...
How can that be, though? I mean, you haven't certified it yet.
Because the state constitution says, once the legislative body passes the resolution and the time passed for you to change your votes on the resolution, that the question is qualified, and once qualified, it shall appear on the ballot in November.
Okay. So let me ask a follow-up question, then. If that's your opinion, I mean, obviously, it is your opinion, your opinion is essentially, "It doesn't matter what we do." So why bother even bothering opposing this resolution, when you're choosing to ignore it? You could just come up to the table and say, "You guys do whatever you want, I'm still going to certify it."
Well, for the Office of Law's part, it's incumbent upon us to inform you when you're doing something that's unconstitutional. It's our opinion that this would, in fact, be an action in violation of the state constitution. In addition to that, we did tell you what the alternative is and the way to solve the problem, which is to pass a resolution with the language as you now think you want that language.
But isn't, so sometimes, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, I'm still kind of new at this, I've only been a council member for six years, but sometimes, you have to test the constitutionality of something, right? I mean, we don't always know if an action is going to be deemed constitutional or not.
You could do that by filing suit, yes. You could test the constitutionality of that by filing suit.
All right. So I guess I'm just troubled, and I understand that you're basing your answer on an interpretation of the constitution. I respect that, and you have a law degree, and I do not. But I'm troubled by the grander point that Ms. Tate has made, that, to me, as a legislator, this is telling us that when we take an action, it's final, even if new information comes to bear, a legislator were to change his or her mind, whatever happens, I just believe that we should have more autonomy to be able to decide what the current will of this body is.
Well, and I believe you do have that autonomy under your own rules, and it has to be a change in the vote at the next succeeding council meeting, which you did not do.
That was also during the budget, where, as you know, every day is a legislative day, and so that would have been, had to have been the very next day when we convened, I think, or we might not even have convened that day. It might have still been a legislative day, and there was no convening. So I understand that point, but practically, it was untenable.
I disagree with that. It had to be done by the May 16th meeting.
In order to reconsider a vote, but I guess what Mr. Walker's point is, and it's his resolution, this seems like another reasonable way to reconsider our action, but your opinion is that that is unconstitutional, so I think...
From, I guess, from a practical standpoint, the one question that came to mind immediately with me was, for a charter resolution, you have to have five votes. So you could override a charter resolution with four votes?
Why wouldn't we just override it with three, if you need five to pass it?